I'd like to welcome the public to today's city council meeting. Me gustaría darles las bienvenidas a todos nuestra junta para el Concilio de la Ciudad de Watsonville. I'd like to just start off by asking everyone to please remember, be respectful of each other, of each other's opinions and ideas, and civility, civility above all else. And so, I'd like to begin by letting everyone know that if you would like to address the city council, to please fill out a blue card and leave it on the podium once you address the city council. Also, for those who require Spanish interpretation devices, obtain one from the table by the interpretation booth. Turn it on and make sure it's on channel zero. Hang it around your neck with the front facing out. If you can here, check to make sure the device is on and unobstructed. It only works inside the city chambers, so there's really no need to steal it. Para usar los aparatos de traducir en español, obtenga un aparato en la mesa junto a la caseta de traducir. Préndalo y use el canal cero. Cuelgácelo en el cuello con el frente hacia afuera. Si no puede oír, revise que el aparato esté encendido y sin obstrucciones. Solo funciona dentro de la cámara del concilio. So, good evening to my colleagues and the city staff. Ms. City Clerk, if you could please have a roll call.
Kaplan Gomez?
Present.
Garcia?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Hernandez?
Presente.
Hurst?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Estrada?
Here. Thank you. And now, we will have the pledge of allegiance, and I'm going to ask a member of the audience, Carlos, if you could please lead all of us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Carlos.
Okay, we will move on to item six, written reports, and members of city council should have received these reports in your packets. They're just for review. And we will now move on to item seven, presentations and oral communications. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not on the agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented except that any council member may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting or referred to staff for clarification and report. Any council member may place matters brought up under oral communications on a future agenda. All speakers are asked to fill out a blue card and leave it at the table designated near the podium. Go to the podium and announce your name and address in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes. So, we will begin with members of the public.
Good evening, city council and city staff. My name is Steve Trujillo, and I live in Parro Village at 774 Beronte Avenue. I wish to acknowledge the fact that we have been liberated from the years-long terror of El Chapo, who today was sentenced to life in prison for all of the murders and drug-addicted souls he helped to create throughout his miserable life. And I'm very happy because he did have some influence on this community. He will no longer have any influence on this community, so adios, El Chapo. I also want to bring to the attention of the city manager that in listening to KGO this afternoon, there is an alternative to Measure H, which failed. Not that we didn't work very hard to get it passed, and I did, but we didn't have enough votes for two-thirds. Assembly Bill 11 by David Chu, Assembly Member of San Francisco. If it's passed through the Assembly of the State Senate, Governor Newsom has said he will sign it, and what it does is provide incentives to communities to build housing. We're talking financial incentives. And yes, frankly, we do need the financial incentives to build, and this is not market-rate housing, this is low and medium-income housing. And in listening to Assembly Member Chu today on KGO radio, he made a great deal of sense. The logic behind his bill sounds, remains sound, in my view. And I'm hoping that our city government will investigate Assembly Bill 11 and possibly urge our state assembly member, my good friend, Robert Rivas, to support it and hopefully it will pass through the state assembly. And the third topic I would like to approach this evening for discussion is the fact that we have just celebrated President's Day, and is the fact that it is the month of February, it is African-American History Month. I know our public library, being a member of Friends of the Public Library, will have a wonderful, or we do have a wonderful display in tribute to African-American History Month. And I hope all of you will come by and see it. And if you don't have a public library card, I do hope you will get one, because there is much more than you might think in our wonderful public library, including probably the best art museum in the city on the second floor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council?
Gary Richard, I'd like to actually have an interpreter, so the people that speak Spanish here know who I'm talking about. That be provided.
There is an interpreter, so you have to speak first.
Okay, they will interpret it to Spanish.
Right. Anybody?
All right. And if you could turn that back to three minutes, I'd certainly appreciate that. I'm talking about the Pender gas in Tammany Hall and the different gangs that run sections of the country. We have a gang here, it's a globalist communist network referred to as the Panetta machine. The oaths that are taken by the people that endorse each other through these districts and counties is a chain that swears their allegiance not to the Constitution, but to the communists. We find that the former chairman of the Santa Cruz Board of Supervisors, Gary Patton, and the rest of the supervisors, supported the communist dictators in Grenada when the communist New Jewel Movement was run by the Cuban agents and Soviet cruise ships were there the morning of the coup d'etat. There were MiG-23s and 3,500 men and Soviet AK-47s that were supported by the Board of Supervisors. Now, Gary Patton is a person who advocated so-called community control, a cooperative of the local energy, and in here, the district supervisor, Wayne Moore, said it was a Fabian Socialist proposal. The person supporting it was Robbie Levy. A Fabian Socialist is Neil Coonerty, who is the chairman of the Board of Supervisors in Santa Cruz. Their emblem is a wolf in sheep's clothing. It is totally Marxist, it's totally supported by Leon Panetta. Leon Panetta sent military and policy information to a communist Soviet spy that was delivering information both to the Soviet Union and Red China. That man was Hugh DeLacy. Hugh DeLacy circulated the petition here for Robbie Levy, who supports this Monterey Community Power Organization in which your city manager and your councilwoman right here belong to. Now, the person that takes credit for this is Daniel Sheehan. Daniel Sheehan runs the Christic Institute. He claims support for this. The Christic Institute supported the attack on those Catholic high school kids on the Capitol together with Bill Gates Foundation and Rockefeller Foundation in order to ignite violence. The communications director of this community green stuff that these people are putting over on you, the communications director is J.R. Kiligrew. Kiligrew gave trophies and support in honor of the five supervisors that are totally Marxist and under control of the Panetta machine. He's pushing a communist nation to be made out of five states in the West. That is the communications director of this community power organization. Look up the California Dynasty of Communism, it has everything about Bruce McPherson and other people that receive money from a triple Chinese communist agent. This is just merely the tip of the iceberg.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to address?
I'm sorry, was that being interpreted?
Yes.
And where will that go? Will they hear it audibly, or is that in the text, or where does that go?
On the...
Oh, on their earphones?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council and city staff, I am Christopher Gregorio, and I'm an assistant engineer with the Public Works and CDD Department. And I would like to invite you all to the Egg Drop Competition, the 16th Annual Egg Drop Competition. We hope to see you all there. Last year, we had a great turnout, and we hope this year we have an excellent turnout. And I'm inviting you all and the community as well. Hopefully, you guys can all make it, and have a good evening.
That was an exquisite pun. Thank you.
It's actually, the Egg Drop is on the 20th of February, next Wednesday, 3:00.
Location?
It's in between the City Hall, City Hall Plaza, and the post office at the alley.
Thank you. Anyone else hoping to address city council? Do so now.
Well, good evening. I'm Nancy Bilisic, and I'm your representative for the Pajaro River Watershed Flood Prevention Authority. Yep, that's a little different than Zone 7. And it's composed of representation of Monterey, San Bernardino, Santa Clara, and Santa Cruz Counties. And I know that Rebecca and Felipe have gone to the meetings previously, but I went to the one on February 1st, and it was held at the San Bernardino County Board of Supervisors Chambers. They had election of officers, and Anthony Batello from San Bernardino County is the new chair. And Greg Caput has been the chair, and he really did a great job with that committee. And I'm going to be the vice chair this year, and there was an audit report there, it was very clean, one of the highest ratings, they had no findings, so people were very happy. And Mark Strudley from the county of Santa Cruz, he updated this board on the river. He did it on the Zone 7 meeting, and then he did it for the larger group, too. There are no work funds yet from the Army Corps, and we should hear, hopefully, in March. We're still waiting. But they did spend $6 to $7 million, the Army Corps spent $6 to $7 million in repairs. They made 17 repairs, and 11 were on the South Sepultis Creek. And I guess we're going to find out how they hold up, because they keep talking, well, they're always talking about, "Well, what's going to happen next? You know, it's going to break, and this and that." Well, we'll see tonight. But I think we're going to be fine. I looked at the South Sepultis Creek earlier, it looks good, and we'll see how much rain we get. But I appreciate your confidence in me, and wanted to let you know that I went to this meeting. And also, I wanted to give a big thanks to Parks and Rec, Nick, because they've started the, what do I want to call it, the project on Ridge Street, where we're replacing the medians. So, it's going to be great. And that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bilisic. Anyone else like to make oral communication to the council?
Yes, my name is Victorious Alexander, Victorioso Alejandro. I just want to remind Watsonville residents what it is to be a good flag-waving Americans, because we are good people. I truly believe that. And I'm American-born Mexican, and I'm proud to be American, and I'm proud to be Mexican. And I know that there's a lot of good-hearted Mexicans that enjoy being American, and I'm proud of that. I want to be able to share with members of the public my latest book that I'm reading. It has a plethora of wonderful information, very illuminating. It's Killers of the Moon. Right? When I read this, the protagonist reminds me of Chairman, well, the previous chairman, Zach Friend. But this is a really good book, I'll recommend members of the public to read that, really good. I want to be able to say this, that all institutions are to be tested by the degree to which they guarantee liberty. William Graham Sumner, what classes all one another. It's very important, these institutions, being able to come in here and offer the public spirit's perspective is part of the Brown Act, right? Being able to speak liberally and truth to political power, public testimony is important. You know, we want a better political community, and I'm dealing with the county Board of Supervisors, because I'm in that arena. And I appreciate it, because the Brown Act protects my right. I don't come from the establishment, and I'm not hostile towards the establishment, but we want a better political system. You know, wherever I go, I'm from Santa Clara County, you know, Chief Mike Honda comes from San Jose, all right? I'm in exile, right? I'm living in Scotts Valley, and it's a beautiful district, right? But I come here because I'm concerned about what's going on with the Brown Act at the County Board of Supervisors under the previous chairman, Zach Friend. They're putting a bullet in our public comment, and we have to protect our democratic values, because members need to be able to come in and weigh in on the political issue. Just because we don't come from a family of wild power and influence, hey, we're a community of equals. We should be able to come, just like the sign says, "Welcome." So, I come in here because I want to be able to inspire people. We need to push back on the County Board of Supervisors and ask them to restore the consent. You guys allow members to weigh in on the political issue, right, according to the Brown Act, but the County Board of Supervisors, they're engaging in anti-d ideological action, anti-political, and anti-democratic. And this is not fair. You know, we should be able to pull and just weigh in. So, I need to be able to remobilize and galvanize the American public and South County residents to push up on the County Board of Supervisors. They're going to do a review in six months. You know, a lot of pork and a lot of bundago expenditures go right through there. The Human Service Department, the DA's Office, you know, the Justice and Public Safety issues, and we want to be able to offer our criticism. And I want to remind members of the public that criticism irritates because it stands above what it criticizes. We have every right. Is that my time?
It reminds me of the fight, the boxing round. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other oral communications from the public to city council? Okay, I will now turn it to my colleagues, and we'll start with Ari. Ari, any oral communications to the public?
Got to turn it on. I do want to just say a couple thank-yous in District 7, as our former councilwoman, Nancy Bilisic, said. We are very excited to see the medians being worked on and something new, and we're really hoping that it won't just bring more beauty to our city, but it will maybe bring slower speeds on Bridge Street as well. Thank you to Mary Esther Rodriguez, who went with some of our residents and did a ride-along in our area to see some of the problematic issues that are happening. And for Public Works, it's just another moment, and I greatly appreciate that as well. So, short and sweet, thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Hurst?
Well, thank you very much. I just wanted to explain my appearance here tonight. You know, the fact that I'm here is kind of a miracle, and some people think it's a fluke anyway, but you can see that something has gone on with my face, and it wasn't because I was lying out on the beach in Zihuatanejo, which I would like to be at, or the fact that I was skiing up in the Sierras, because I hear they had a great snowfall. There's some allergic reaction occurring. I was in Indiana this last week, my mother passed away, and I want to say thank you very much to the council and all the community members out there that have sent me cards and, you know, flowers and things of that nature, acknowledging the passing of my 95-year-old mother. Amazing that she had such a grateful life. And so, during that airtime travel or something else that I consumed or brushed up against, that's given me this wonderful red glow here this evening, and so, let's hear it for red glow, okay?
Thank you, Councilman Hurst. Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for being here today as well. You know, I attended several events as well, but one of them was that I'm glad that it's continuing the tradition of the mayor's bike ride. I know Lowell did some, and I'm glad that the new mayor is also doing the bike rides. It's a good opportunity to, you know, for people to lead a healthy lifestyle, I think, and it's an active lifestyle as well. So, I'm glad that they're continuing that. I had a great time at the last ride. And the other event that I attended was the Peace and Unity March. It was a 25th continuous march that we've had nonstop for 25 years to address the violence, to address gang violence, and domestic violence as well. And it started with the death of two young people, eight-year-old and a 16-year-old, Jessica and Jorge Cortez. But it was a great turnout at the event, and it really is what community is about at that event. You know, it's people coming together and making sure that the mothers feel the support from all the community, because many of those mothers lost their children to acts of violence. So, it was really good for everyone that showed up there. And that pretty much concludes my remarks. I want to make sure I keep it short.
Thank you, Councilman Hernandez. Councilman Gonzalez?
Okay, I'm not going to guarantee this is going to be short. Anyways, though, I do welcome everybody here, and I hope everybody's going to stay dry with this weather coming in front of us, it's two days rain, so hopefully, you guys are prepared for it and try to stay dry. Just recently, I attended the Metro Board of Directors, I was actually sworn in to the Metro Board of Directors. So, it's a new venture for me in representation for the city of Watsonville. One of the good things that I found and we approved was what they call is the Flex Bus, and we gave them a lane to park at the Pacific Station. And what this bus is, it's running from San Francisco to LA, and what its objective is, it's a millennium bus, what they call it. So, you could, it has Wi-Fi, you could text, you could use your phone, get tickets, so you can get on a bus from Pacific Downtown Santa Cruz and take it away down to LA. And if you want to, you can go from LA to Vegas and up to San Francisco. For me, this has worked great for my daughter that's attending San Francisco State University, because it gives us an opportunity for her to be able to get on a bus, go to Santa Cruz, and if we're not able to pick her up, she could still get on a bus from Santa Cruz here to Watsonville, and then walk to the house. So, it's great to see things like this moving forward. Transportation, any type of transportation that moves a lot of people in a short, with a small bus, is good, I think. So, and with that, the other thing that they came up with is that they will stop issuing pre-printed coupons for paracord riders, because there were some issues with those. because there were some issues with those. And I had a meeting also with the executive director, Jennifer Panetta, for the Santa Cruz Housing Authority. And she came up with some good information for me. And one of the things is that they're really working on is on the landlord assistance. What they've done is they've hired an individual. I don't have her name, and I wrote down her name. Blanca Mendoza. And Blanca Mendoza will be committed to working with landlords and showing them how beneficial it is to help folks with vouchers and get them vouchers and assist them. So it's good, it's good for the community, because the more vouchers we get out there for folks that need assistance in homes is what we need. And right now, currently, she let me know that we had 4,566 households using the House Choice Voucher Program. And the low-income public housing is 234. The USDA RD Farm Worker Housing is 70. And that's the one that's located out by Buena Vista, if anybody doesn't know where the USDA Housing Unit's at, that's out there. And then we have 15 units that are tax credits, and my time expired. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gonzalez. Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez.
Thank you. I have a couple events that are coming up. One is the CASA event, that is their annual Valentine's event that will be this Thursday at the Severino's. And the fundraiser goes to their organization that helps a lot of our youth and their CASA partner. And so that'll be on the 13th of this week. And we also have Sons of Italy event that will be held on Saturday over at the Women's Club. So those of you that may have an interest in that organization and that fundraiser, something available there. WASC, Watsonville Adult Santa Cruz School is gonna be having a bit of a workshop there to let us know what they're doing in terms of the community here for the adult ed programs. And that will be held, I think, on the 20th of May, of February. And for emergency services here, in case the public needs anything, if we're having extensive rains at all and you're concerned about flooding, I believe that our fire department will have sandbags. If anybody has an interest in wanting to be a bit proactive in getting anything like that, that they feel that they would be in a position where they needed some sandbags to prevent any flooding from coming to your home, that you can get them there. And I think mass rapid transit is our buzzword for the transportation modality here that we're looking at and projects moving forward that will help the mass public transit. So we'll hear a lot more about our transportation system. I think we have a little bit of a presentation today on part of that modality that helps this community out, and look forward to hearing some more about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez. Councilwoman Garcia.
Yes, I wanna report on two meetings that I attended and also give a thank you. You may know that I represented, and I still represent, Watsonville on the Affordable Housing of Santa Cruz County. As you know, Measure H did not pass. It needed two-thirds vote, and it only got 55% countywide. But I'm pleased to say that in Watsonville, 60% of our voters voted for Measure H. It was decided, we had a recent meeting, just to recap in terms of what was the learning we had in terms of this last campaign. And it was decided to continue to hold the coalition together and see how we can make it a more permanent organization. A small group has been formed to see how we may be working with other organizations, such as Affordable Housing Now, Affordable Housing Now, Housing Advocacy Network, and Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. So when the larger group reconvenes, I will report back then what was decided about working with these other organizations. Secondly, I'd like to say that Matt and I met with Mary Garthiness, Executive Director of Santa Cruz Community Ventures. If you remember, I had previously reported that we were in conversation with her regarding children's savings accounts to attend college. Maria was happy to report that several city and county organizations have come on board. And as a result, she says, beginning in September, newborn babies in Watsonville, because that's where the program's gonna start, here in Watsonville, newborn babies in Watsonville will start getting their savings accounts initiated. So at that time, in September, hopefully, she's gonna come to the city council and give more details in terms of the success of the beginning of our program. Finally, for those of you who have Facebook, you may have seen that the city recently had a video on carbon monoxide alarms. Well, I recently called the fire department, because my alarm kept beeping and beeping. No matter what I did, it kept beeping. And so I called 911 and asked if the fire department could come. I was so embarrassed, because when they came, had I read the fine print on the back of the alarm, I would've known that after seven years, you have to buy a new alarm. But I just wanted to say that nonetheless, the fire officials were so friendly and so courteous and advised me never to hesitate to call them whenever it comes to this carbon monoxide alarm. I felt so safe that they were here to serve us. And so I wanna thank our Fire Chief Pablo for having such great firemen hired. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Garcia. For my part, I would just like to thank some local organizations that were nice enough to invite me to some community listening sessions and community input meetings. So our Parks and Community Services is currently planning the next steps for Ramsey Park and La Plaza. And we will have upcoming meetings. And we encourage everyone to please show up, lend your voice to the process. Matt, do you know the day of the next meeting? I know it barely published it.
I don't have the date of the next meeting, but we have all of the upcoming workshops on the Parks and Rec website, as well as the city website, if you want more information.
Thank you. So I attended that meeting. I attended a meeting, an encuentro, with my own organization and Community Agroecology Network, where we listen to people and we listened to their ideas on what they wanna see in terms of health for the community. So that was eye-opening. PV Pride, I also attended a meeting with them. And just a remarkable group of young individuals looking to do a lot of good in the community. Community Action Board just got a grant to help with immigrant services. I'm very happy that they were able to obtain that grant. And then, just a big highlight for me, it was a big honor to be invited to Watsonville High School's Career Day. That was awesome. I was able to talk to a lot of young people in terms, you know, about politics, local politics, and sort of just pursuing their dreams. So that was great. And I've gotten some criticisms from the other schools. So, you know, I just wanna put it out there that if any school would like to invite me or any member of the city council or city staff, we'd be more than happy to go and to talk to the people. And our next meeting for the Parks and Community Services is February the 28th, from 6:00 to 8:00. And that'll be here, next door, in the Civic Plaza Community Room. And then we also have another meeting scheduled for March 2nd, from 12:00 to 2:00. And then March 7th, 6:00 to 8:00 at Ramsey Park. Okay, so the community is invited, the public's invited. We wanna hear from you, and we wanna know what you want to see in your parks. So, thank you. And now we will move on to item 11B. And we will be honoring and celebrating a group of remarkable young individuals from our community who organized an amazing conference for youth. And they represent Pahara Valley Prevention and Student Assistance, PVPSA. So if the young people are here, if you'd like to stand up real quick and head to the podium. And, do we have the proclamation?
Yeah, it's over by Ari.
Ah. Okay. So, is this on? Yeah. So I'd like to, again, just recognize this amazing group of young people who spent weeks planning the conference. And then they gave up their Saturdays to host a number of community leaders on a number of issues. And would you like to just say a couple words about the event and how you felt and why you decided to host it in the first place?
I just wanted to say how much of an honor it was to be part of PVPSA. It really taught me a lot about leadership and how to show all of my peers that we can be a part of something bigger than what we're usually part of. And a lot of people don't join into these things because they feel like they can't. And it was an honor for me to express that we can.
Also, I would like to say that we are grateful to be part of this program, because it taught us how to solve problems on the spot, and they really helped us mature. And that is something that's very important as we grow. And we can use those skills to help this community as well.
Well, I just wanna say thank you to the city council and the mayor for taking time to acknowledge all of our hard work that we put into this conference. The conference itself was very eye-opening for me, as well as, I'm pretty sure, my peers. It was a really big honor to be able to start something like that here in Watsonville, something that would inspire our friends, our classmates, and as well as our teachers. And being able to stand up there and actually feel like we're, it's the beginning of something, was just a really, really big honor. So, thank you.
Empower Watsonville was a great event and a great experience for many of us. And we feel privileged to be, to take part in a city-wide event. A lot of hard work went into it during the summer, as my friends have mentioned. But I would also like to thank other people for making it possible. First of all, I would like to thank PVPSA for giving us the resources and taking their time and the people to teach us and aid us throughout the whole process. I would also like to thank everybody who was present and gave a presentation, and to everybody who attended as well. And finally, I would like to thank city council for recognizing the work that went into this conference. Thank you.
Okay, we have a resolution for you, or proclamation. And it has a lot of where-asses, one, two, three, four, five where-asses. But instead of reading all of those, we're just gonna do the now, therefore. Now, therefore, I, Francisco Estrada, Mayor of the City of Watsonville in the state of California, on behalf of the city council, hereby command Pahara Valley Prevention and Student Assistance for their valuable service and devoted community leadership to the Pahara Valley. Congratulations.
What's that?
Quick picture?
Absolutely.
Does the camera wanna do that for the quick picture?
We, uh, just wanna say how proud we are of our young people, especially this group that took a risk and that really put themselves out there to do something special. And I hope that I'm currently looking at a future councilman or councilwoman in this group. Yeah, in this group. And I hope you continue to give back to Watsonville. And I, we hope that, you know, you pursue your dreams and your goals, and you prepare yourselves, and you come back to Watsonville when you're ready to give more and give other future generations an opportunity to succeed as well. Hey.
Oh, turn around.
Hey. A round of applause, please. Before I move on, would any member of council like to just add anything to the work done by our PVPSA youth? Okay, great. And now we move on to item 7C. Mr. Smith, any updates from closed session?
Excuse me, thank you, Mayor. The council met and heard reports from staff on all three items on tonight's closed session, but took no final action on those items. So there's no report out of closed session, other than that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item eight, reports to council. We will have now a State of Metro by Santa Cruz County Metropolitan Transit District, Chief Executive Officer Alex Clifford. Mr. Clifford, welcome.
Good evening, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, council members. Thank you for the opportunity, once again, to make my annual journey to Watsonville to present you with our State of Metro. And thank you for your council members that serve on Metro. We sure appreciate all the good work of Councilmember Kaufman-Gomez, and especially in the financial area and holding our feet to the fire. And we really enjoy the enthusiasm of our new member, Mr. Gonzalez. Good to have you aboard. Thank you for the kind words earlier today. I'd like to start off with a few quick notes about Metro, so that I can refresh your memory, and in that case of newer council members, introduce you to a few things about Metro, some important things. Our operating budget this year is $49 million. We employ 319 people. We own 100 fixed route and commuter buses that operate on 26 of our routes. We have 41 para-transit vehicles. Our service area is the entire county, about 264,000 folks that reside in the county. We provide 5 million fixed route and commuter trips per year. That is substantial, along with 72,000 para-transit, or what we call para-cruise, para-transit trips per year. Always interesting to note that about 50%, 5-oh, about 50% of our annual ridership are students and faculty from UCSC and Cabrillo College. That includes Cabrillo College Main Campus and Cabrillo College right here in Watsonville. So you might say, well, how do you pay for all of that? Well, it's through a variety of funding sources that we accomplish that. Our passenger fares cover about 19.1%. Now, that's 19.1% if I include capital. If I back the capital out of it, it's about 23%. That's a pretty high fare box recovery for transit properties across the state of California. 46.5% of our funding comes from the 1978 half-cent sales tax, which is dedicated to our agency in perpetuity, along with the Measure D sales tax measure, of which 16, 1-6, 16% of the total Measure D comes to our agency. So thank you to the voters for Measure D. It really helps our agency, particularly our para-transit services. About 13, a little over 13% is state operating funding sources. SB 1 is a big part of that, and I'll talk about that in a minute. About 8.5% comes from the federal government. That's operating assistance that's provided to us. 11% is capital, what we call capital-eligible state and federal sources. Small cities, transit-intensive cities, programmed through the federal government and the STA, State of Good Repair Program, through the state. And about 1, a little over a percent and a half, kinda fills in the gap. That's leases and advertising revenue and miscellaneous sources of revenue that we receive. Now, all of that allows our board to take about $3 million now. This is a new program. So this will be coming up on our second year of this new program of carving out about $3 million a year to put towards capital. And I'll explain in a moment why that's important. But all in all, those funding sources, thanks to the voters of this county with Measure D, and thanks to the voters of this state in not allowing Prop 6 to pass in November, we're able to have a five-year balanced budget. Now, that's unusual. We haven't been able to have that. We've been drawing down on reserves for many years. We've been drawing down on reserves for many years, but over the course of the last several years, our board has really worked hard, and that combined with these other new revenue sources have really done well for us. Again, I mentioned Prop 6 failing. That, that is important to us. I know it was important to you as a city, because those funds are used for your local streets and roads and, and for bike and pedestrian trails. So, we're certainly grateful for the voters in the state of California in upholding SB 1 and the revenues that flow to you, the city, and to us, the transit agency. Something that's real exciting, and I know our director, your councilperson Kaufman Gomez, knows about this. We are finally going to have automatic vehicle location on our buses. That's going to produce all kinds of neat data for us to run the system. So, those of us who are geeks and like data will enjoy working with that data and making the system run better. But what's most important for your community members and our riders across the system is, for the first time, we will have a smartphone application in which the, the consumers of our service can go on their smartphone, and they can look at when their bus is scheduled to arrive at the stop that they want to board on. And that's super, because if our bus is running late, why not stay wherever you are in, in, at home studying, at work producing, a little bit longer? Because you know, you looked at our smart, your smartphone, and it said the bus is running 10 minutes late, you can stay there 10 minutes longer and then get to the bus stop just before the bus arrives. What a great thing for us. That, that is, thank you, again, in part to SB 1 and state funding that provided that, those funds for us to go out to bid. We've awarded that, and we're in the process of, of beginning to put that on our bus. It'll take us about a year to do that on all of our buses. I mentioned the importance of that capital program. Let me tell you why that's so important. We are way behind in replacing our buses. About 50% of our bus fleet, we operate 98 buses, about 50% of that bus fleet is in dire need of being replaced. They are buses that are past their useful life. Our mechanics do just a fabulous job of maintaining buses, but we're still running 1998 diesel buses. Not to mention the fact that we'd like to retire diesel buses, but we're running 1998 diesel buses. They need to be replaced. Well, that's a big proposition. If we go to replace all of those with compressed natural gas buses, which is what our agency started to move to in about 2002, that's about $38 million. That's a chunk of change. Hard to figure out where that's going to come from. If we go with electric, that's $50 million. And as you know, from, from the California Air Resources Board recently adopting a, a regulation that will require all transit properties in the state of California to be 100% zero emission bus by 2040, that means that in the coming years, we're going to have to buy a combination of compressed natural gas buses and electric buses, and then, starting in 2029, everything we buy will have to be fully electric buses. So, they're, they're much more expensive. Diesel buses, about $750,000 each. Electric buses, about $1 million each. So, it's a huge, huge challenge for us. But that $3 million that the board is carving out for capital is going to good use. It allows us to leverage those dollars and go after state and federal grants and try to buy more. For example, if we could buy three electric buses with that $3 million, hopefully we can leverage it with state and federal grants and buy six, eight, or 10 buses. And that'll help us really chip away at those 50 buses pretty quickly. Another kind of exciting thing along the lines of electric buses is, we have, we are soon to place an order for four Proterra, Proterra's the manufacturer, fully electric zero emission buses. The first one of those buses was funded through a state program called LC TOP, Low Carbon Something or Other Program. And that, that bus was submitted under a grant for Watsonville, for a Watsonville circulator. Now, that's been a couple of years. It's taken some time, because it's a very complicated thing for us to, to put our toe in the water and start running electric buses, but we're getting close. We expect that first electric bus to be here early next year. Over the course of this year, we will continue to plan and construct the charging infrastructure. This is all new stuff for us. We're, we're used to diesel fuel, and we're used to compressed natural gas. We're going now to electric, so we have to charge those. We have to put charging infrastructure in our yard in Santa Cruz. We hope to have that done in time for the arrival of the first electric buses. We'll do something really exciting with you and your community, because that will run on a circulator that we yet to develop, we're in the process of develop, developing here in Watsonville. So, I'll keep you informed and involved in that, and I know you'll be excited, as I am, about that circulator bus. We continue to invest in Watsonville. You, I'm sure you've noticed that the Watsonville Transit Center over the last several years has improved. It's not done. We can still keep doing things to make it look better, but we are doing, I think, a good job of improving that transit center and investing in rejuvenating. The landscaping has been one of our latest tasks. We worked recently with Cabrillo College in part, in, in that partnership that we have, and the students who identified an issue with finishing evening classes here in Watsonville. They would finish their evening classes, and they'd have to walk at night, five or six blocks to the transit center to catch a bus to go home. So, we worked very close with them, and one or two service changes ago, we made some adjustments to Route 71. So, now we come within a block of Cabrillo College campus here in Watsonville, the students can just walk that one block, board our bus, and safely go to the transit center. They're real excited about that. Following our service changes in 2016, as you know, we had to make some service reductions across the entire system. Most of the routes in Watsonville are performing very well. We are struggling with Route 79. It does have low ridership. Route 79 services East Lake Shopping Center and Crestview Center, and it continues to be a little bit of work for us, but we're hoping that as we design that Watsonville electric bus circulator, we'll be able to make some tweaks to the 79 that's, that's, in which the two routes work together and improve that Route 79. That's our, that's our hope. That's what we're going to be working on. And then, to that end, later this year, we'll be communicating with the public here in Watsonville to receive their, their interest, their thoughts, their unmet needs relative to this circulator, and help us design where the various points are for that circulator. And then finally, later this year, in, in the spring, actually, we'll be performing an onboard customer survey. We haven't done one of those in a long time. Technically, we should be doing it about every year or two, because it's a great tool to understand who our riders are and what they think about our service and what they'd like us to change in our service. And we'll also use that survey to talk to ri, non-writers and understand why they're not riding our service and what we can do to try to attract them to our service. So, Mayor, council members, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Clifford. Do we have any questions from council, Councilman Hearst?
I just wanted to go over the number of employees one more time for us.
319.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilman Edmendis.
I know you do have a lot of employees from South County as well, too.
Do, yes.
We really appreciate that over here. Do, do we have an idea where the, the, that commuter bus, or the little bus, is going to go?
The circulator, actually, it'll be a full-size bus, which is pretty cool.
Oh, okay.
And we don't, we, our, my staff has some thoughts, but we want, we don't want to get out there too fast with our initial thoughts. We really want to interface with the community and understand where the community thinks its needs are for that circulator.
Okay. And was there still more activity going to happen at the, the Metro Center, the, here the, on Rodriguez? I know that they were talking about the mural, too. Are they going to update that one, or?
Sure, that was a project started by Councilmember Dutra. We ran into some difficulties with that project. It has stalled. I think what I'd like to do is, is meet with your two council members that sit on our board and talk about how we should proceed with that. There was a thought at one point about completely taking out the existing mural and replacing it with a new, modern mural. But then, along that journey, we discovered that there was some community feedback suggesting that maybe we should just revitalize the existing mural.
Yeah.
So, we need to go back, and we need to talk about that. There could be something in which we revitalize the existing mural and maybe use some other space available on the walls at the center and put a new mural up. So, I'd like to really talk to your two representatives and, and get that restarted again sometime this year.
Awesome.
Councilwoman Kaufman Gomez?
I thought we were going to go down the road. Can you talk to us about what our Watsonville ridership is? What are our numbers here?
You know, I, I can't. I should have prepared for that. I will be happy to send you back a, a note on that. I will tell you that, just in general, your routes, with the exception of the 79, that's, that's our low producer, which runs at about six passengers per trip. That, that's low. You know, you've, you've got roughly 40 seats on a bus. There's a lot of capacity there. But your, your other routes range from a high, on, this is weekday ridership, from a high of 31 on the Route 69W to a low of, I'm going to just say 14 on the 72, which services Watsonville Hospital and Pinto Lake. So, you've got good ridership. If I look at that, now, now, take out all the UCSC routes and their ridership, they're just incredible. You know, the amount of students that we carry up to the campus and back home. So, take that out. They, of course, they range anywhere from in the 50s to the high 60s per trip. That's pretty substantial. Take that out, and you look at the other part of the system, non-Watsenville, non-UCSC, those numbers are really good numbers compared to some of the other routes that are ranging in the 7, 22, 12, 14 per trip. So, your, your numbers are good.
The, we're really concerned about the public safety and, obviously, transportation, the pedestrians, the cyclists, and whatnot. Are you looking at, we'd obviously want to work together on what we can do to make sure that it's safe as possible, whether we've got somebody that is, you know, trying to get to the station, coming and going, because, you know, we, we still have the, the people that may be taking a bike to, to the bus. We may, with the pedestrians getting to the bus. It would be nice to be able to make sure that we've integrated that modality in with our big picture of our, our transportation safety component for, for Watsonville. So, we're hoping that we have more conversation about that, because, obviously, we've been hearing a lot in the media, and we, we've had a lot of the pedestrian and bicycle injuries that are in this area. So, I'm hoping that we have a more robust conversation about how that can get integrated into the bigger picture of our safety planning here. So, I want to make sure that we keep that together. Also, being part of the organization and, and learning from some other counties of what they're doing, that stewardship program, and educating the public on what this service permits and getting more ridership and, and publicity, what, what can you see that we could do better in order to improve the ridership here in Watsonville?
We could do better in Watsonville. We could do better across the system. Anytime we're running a bus with empty seats, that's just a missed opportunity. And, and to that end, I will share with you, and I know you know about this, we haven't had a, a marketing function at this agency in many, many years. Apparently, in, in some fiscally bad times in the past, that function went away, and I'm happy to report that we are doing that. We're recruiting for a marketing director right now as we speak. That recruitment should be closed within, I think, about two weeks. Hopefully, within a month or so, I'll have somebody aboard, and, and I really look forward to our agency finally getting back to trying to market and draw people into the service. You know, the one place we don't need a lot, a lot of effort is the peak hour. That's sort of your captive audience, right? In the morning, they're going to work, doctor's appointments, things like that, and the evening, they come home. It's a, it's a defiant peak, and the buses have very little capacity left over. But during the rest of the hours of the day and the evening, we have so much capacity. We just need to find the people to fill those seats, and we need a good, smart marketing person to do that, and I hope, hope we'll have that soon.
Let's talk about the positions. I know that you're having a difficult time recruiting. I think that you can plug in a little bit of opportunity there as well.
Yes, thank you for that opportunity. So, we struggle with filling our bus operator recruitments, first and foremost. We're an agency in which we've had a lot of folks that have worked for us for 20 to 30 years, and, and sometimes you sort of hire in bubbles. You hire a lot of people, which means somewhere down the road, a lot of people are going to retire, and we're kind of in one of those, those bubbles right now. So, anybody listening who's interested, please go to our website, take a look at it. We still have vacancies. We can't have vacancies very long. It's, it's a, operationally, it makes it difficult for us to meet the service needs in the morning, and then it costs us in overtime to try to cover those runs that don't have somebody to, to actually drive that bus. So, we would love to, to hear from people in your community that are interested in driving the bus, and there are other positions. If they go to our website, there's other positions, and it is difficult. We sometimes go through multiple rounds of recruitment, just trying to find the right people to fill the position, so.
So, let's hope we find some recruitment here from our Watsonville area.
Yes.
Anything with vandalism with our, our location downtown, the metro location? Everything's good on that, or have you had any symptoms with vandalism at all?
You know, no reports across, across the system, not just Watsonville. Occasionally, we get tagged. We have a zero tolerance for that, so our facilities maintenance folks will just drop everything they're doing and go remove that when that happens, and it happens in numerous places throughout the county.
And any, any complaints that need to be addressed regarding safety as the bus pulls over to get any of the passengers and making sure you have enough space to pull over to some of those locations where those bus stops are? Are we, are we getting that taken care of so that it's safe for the bus to come to the curb to pick up the passengers, or anything that we need to look at in terms of public works on our end?
Occasionally, we'll, we'll reach out to you and talk about things like cars encroaching into a bus stop. We need enough room to be able to pull that big vehicle in, get proper alignment to the curb, load the passengers, you know, be nice and close to the curb, and then pull back out. So, we, we'll communicate with your Public Works Department when we notice things. On the safety side, I've been watching the conversation here in Watsonville. Feel free to invite my planning folks into any of those conversations you'd like. We're happy to participate. Safety is always first for us, and, and, of course, as people are boarding the bus, we want them to stay away from the edge of the curb, allow that bus to pull in and align himself, open the doors, and then board the bus, and be extremely careful right now during this wet weather, because we do have a lot of trip and falls.
Thank you. Thank you for that extra PR there.
Councilwoman Garcia?
I really do appreciate all the positive activities that are going on with the metro. My question has to do with, I'm so pleased you're going to do that survey, and my question is, how are you reaching out to the Spanish-speaking community in regards to that survey?
We'll, we'll do the survey bilingual, and when we...
But, but how are you going to get it out?
Yes. The, one of the important ways that we do that for existing customers is to do that onboard the bus, so we'll, we'll have individuals with bilingual capability to help us with that, and then we'll also do some, some blasting of that out in the mail, and, and we'll also have the bilingual surveys for that.
You may want to consider radio also, because you, you mentioned about the non-writers, and in terms of the non-writers, that might be a way to get to those.
Sure. And what's nice about that is, one of the tools is to post surveys to our website, and that's a communication tool we can use to try to drive people to our website to take the survey. Yeah, thank you for that.
I, too, have a question. I know that at UCSC, part of the tuition helps pay for the bus rides for the students who attend UCSC, so I was sort of wondering if we have anything like that for our students here at Pahr Valley Unified School District? Is there, is that something that's kind of like a pipe dream of mine? Is that even possible? Is there sort of a way to get a Grand Alliance going and get something like that here for our students?
Sure. Let me just note a, a key distinction. So, with UCSC and with Cabrillo College, in order to follow state law, it takes a vote of the student body to self-impose that fee upon themselves. So, when they pay their tuition within those fees that they pay, they're paying for the transit service, and then the colleges take that money and buy the service. In the case of Cabrillo, we, we work very close with them to make sure that we're providing service along that corridor that meets their needs. On the school district side, it's a little bit more challenging. We don't have that ability, but I will tell you, we've, we've had discussions with school districts. We've been unable to convince them to bring some money to help us provide augmented service. If, if you're willing to help us out and arrange a meeting, we're happy to go to that meeting and talk about that subject matter.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Yes, Councilman Hearst?
Yes, I just wanted to thank Mr. Clifford for their safety work on the bus stop across from Safeway on Airport Boulevard. We're, we're still trying to educate pedestrians on how to use that crosswalk, but the, the work the metro did on it was fabulous. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for the improvements the city put in in that area.
Councilwoman Parker?
I just want to say, I'm a metro believer, have been since I was a kid, and I rode back and forth to Santa Cruz. My mom used, used para-cruise, and one of the things that I would like to really see, and you brought it up, Paco, I was thinking, is being able to integrate our school districts so that high schoolers from all over the county can travel back and forth, and that's, that just facilitates communication. So, I'm not applying for the marketing job, but, you know, for... So, I'm not applying for the marketing job, but, you know, free weekends and have a big free weekend ride and see who can get on there. You know, I don't know if that's a crazy thought or something, and try to get people on the bus to, to ride back and forth and see how the routes go.
We, we can always improve. You, you might be amazed, across this county, how much coordination we actually have with the school districts to provide school, what we call sort of school bell service, going to school, coming home, and, and adjusting our service, to the extent we can do it without violating federal law, which precludes us from providing school bus service.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clifford, for your time, and we appreciate the update.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the invitation, and I'll see you again next year.
That's good. Thank you.
Good evening.
Now's the time where we like to invite public input on any consent agenda item. Feel free to approach the podium.
Gary, Richard Arnold, Chairman. I see that both Mr. Estrada and Mr. Gonzalez attended the California League of Cities for new mayors and councilmen. I think most of the public doesn't know, and I hope it's in your summary, the amount of people and the various foundations with special interests and the various lobbies that work on the League of California Cities, which is really no more than a political union for politicians. In fact, I'm not sure who pays either for your trips or whether the taxpayers pays for your memberships or not. But if people go to the California League of Cities and look at their missions and intent, they intend to make it easier. You were talking about Proposition H shouldn't get sixty-five percent. They're pushing you, and I don't know where the hell they get the authority to lobby you and switch your loyalty from the taxpayers to this union lobby that wants to make fifty-five percent so that you can tax us easier. I think that's outrageous, and the fact that you don't report that to the people or what goes on at those meetings, and all those people providing the buffets and all the, the waste companies and all the various contractors that are up there. People should go up there and see what happens between you when sometimes you're in this city wearing a button for or against something, and then when I go up there and see people, I'm not talking about you specifically, but I've seen it time after time, where they take the opposite position. And they're lectured time after time by agencies. One of the things, it's like Europe, where people have to, it, it's against the law almost to speak about global warming. It's supposed to be a fixed science. It is not. It's a guise that cities and counties use to enforce controls. You look at everything that comes from Ambag, your secret Soviet over here that's never reported by the damn press over there or the community TV. I think you should realize, when you come back to, let us know who's paying for your membership, and they're training you how to deal with us at the California League of Cities. I think that's a deceit and a fraud that's been perpetrated on the people of California for decades.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to comment on any item on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I, I do apologize. The report number eight, just having public input, I wanted to say this, I use the metro to come to Watsonville, 'cause I got family, and I'm in Scotts Valley, so I use the metro to go all the way down to the County Board of Supervisors. What I noticed, it's a wonderful service. This is a really beautiful service. The bus riders, the bus drivers, wonderful people. However, I see that there's a growing crisis with the immiserated population, especially the mentally ill. I like to see the bus drivers, even though they're magnificent, there's a lot of mentally ill people on there that need crisis intervention training, where the drivers are able to deal with that. And also, the lifetime ban, they're banning the mentally ill people, and I think that's, that's something that needs to be considered also, 'cause we shouldn't marginalize those type of people out of our, out of riding the bi, the bus. But it's a wonderful service. Also, I, I wanna be able to, to let members of the public to know that I do appreciate coming in here, feeling welcome. I, I do appreciate you guys honoring the consent agenda. I, I appreciate you guys having the approval right here for members to have input, to weigh in on the political issue, something that's being violated at the County Board of Supervisors, the Brown Act. And this is important, 'cause members should be able to not have to grovel and beg to be able to participate in the affairs of their local government. We wanna, we wanna honor and respect our democratic values, because we are proud Americans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public wanting to comment on any consent agenda item? Not seeing anybody, we will-
I'll move the consent agenda.
Can we get a second?
Second.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion by Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez, seconded by Councilman Gonzalez. Ms. City Clerk, if we could take a-
Mayor, I, I have a couple of corrections. Small, small corrections on page, our electronic page one hundred and eighty-nine, under the mobile home public hearings, Mr. Sinott testified from Portola Heights. His last name is S.I.N.N.O.T.T. You can see, I had a little too much time on the airplane to look at the minutes. And then, again, on page one hundred and ninety-two, regarding traffic safety, it was Janneke, that's J.A.N.N.E.K.E. Strauss, S.T.R.A.U.S.E. Just a little spelling, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Hurst.
Friendly amendment motion is fine.
Just a correction.
For those corrections.
Okay. So, we have a motion on the floor by, and a second. City Clerk can take role.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hurst?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to item eleven, new business, consideration of approval of the Watsonville Brillante Art Project at the Rodriguez Street Parking Garage. And we have Deputy City Manager Tamara Vides, who will tell us a little bit about it.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmember Tamara Vides, Deputy City Manager. I'm very happy to be here tonight with, with what I think will be one-of-a-kind project. I like to tell the council, we're gonna have a few recommendations for you this evening. One is gonna be a motion, if you decide to approve this project, and then a resolution, doing some allocations and considering some ask from the artists in order for this project to take place in our city property. But before I enter in detail with that, I'd like to tell you about the project itself. You probably, I, I wanna first give you some, some background about how this project comes to our attention. Many of you know Kathleen Croce, not only as a very talented artist, but you probably know her as a long-term resident of our community. Ms. Croce approached the city staff back in the spring of two thousand and eighteen with a proposal about doing what is described as the Watsonville Brillante Project. We spent, then, in September, Ms. Croce came and spoke with the council about this idea and council director staff to work with Ms. Croce and see if this is, is something feasible. The goal of the Watsonville Brillante Project is, is to transform community through a creative place-making while empowering and employing Watsonville youth to do art. And I will, and I will give you an image of what Watsonville Brillante really is. It proposes to wrap the parking garage right here, the parking structure right next to us. It's a hundred and eighty-five horizontal panels in that structure that are size eight feet by three and a half feet. And it was proposed to wrap them with mosaic art. And I'm gonna let the artist to explain what the art will consist of, because she does way better job than I, I would about that. But as described by her, and every time we met, we do believe that this project will definitely bring vibrancy, diversity, and connectedness through artwork in our community. I wanna give you a picture, because it's easier to visualize. So, if the, the parking garage, all those color sections that are there, all the way around, all three sides, including the sides of the building that you cannot see, that is closer to the park, to the post office, will be wrapped with mosaic images and colorful images, every single one of those panels. So, I wanna share with the council, how would this project work? In order to wrap, to create those images, mosaic images, the artist will solicit images from the community. So, she will, very similarly to other projects that she's worked on in our community and in other places as well, she will solicit community input and for the design. The, the images, the proposed images will come to the city for approval through our arts process that we will have in place for, for the images to be approved. Once the images are approved, tile, mosaic tiles will be created at Museo Park. Museo Park will become a youth center for the arts in which all the creative process will take place. And once those tiles are created, the installer that Ms. Croce is working with will obtain building permits, as any other project on city property. And they will, those mosaics will be installed in the garage by Rinaldi Tile, which is a local company in Watsonville, in ten phases. This is a project that will take about five years to be completed. And it's gonna be two, two installation phases per year. So, we, we will see the garage incrementally being wrapped as more images are developed and more mosaics are developed at, at the Museo Center. We had several discussions with the artist and were able to see how, how we can work together and partner with her on, in this endeavor. What the artist proposed to do is that she will cover the core expenses of this project through sponsorships, donations, and grants. This is definitely not an inexpensive undertaking. It will be about a million and a half dollar cost to, to wrap the, the garage with mosaic tiles. Today, she just shared with me earlier tonight that she's actually halfway there in her fundraising. And pending this approval tonight, she may even have more, more fundraising opportunities available to this project. So, with, considering that, there are some very specific asks of the city. One is a creative space, and the artist is, we are working with her in considering a lease agreement for one dollar a year for Museo Park, in which it will be dedicated for this, for this center for the youth creating art, Museo Park. That will be the space where she will work creating the mosaics. She's also asking that, of course, we'll give her access to the garage during the installation periods, and that's estimated to be about two weeks, every time they come and install the panels that are completed. And that we provide water and electricity for the project to take place, the installation. In order for the mosaics to be installed in our garage, we need, the, the surface, the outside concrete of the garage needs to be prepared in order to receive and the adhesive component that they're gonna use to install the mosaics. And that is gonna require either a very good power washing or sandblasting of the, of the paint that is currently in, on the walls, and that's estimated to cost about sixty thousand dollars. And the artist is requesting that the city be responsible for preparation of the surface and have also requested that we waive the building permits for the garage, not the process of reviewing for building permits, but the fees associated with the permit. We ha, Director Calo Backweb from Parks and Community Services Department, myself and Ms. Croce had many, many meetings, just to kind of really learn about the process, learn how she does the installation, just really kind of like explore the cost, the execution, and any maintenance implications of this project if we install the mosaics in the garage. And I'm happy to report that through our research and conversations, we were able to identify that there's not really a new branding of maintenance when the, the mosaics are installed. There's actually a good thing, because the garage needs to be maintained, the paint, the outside painting, we, we are due for, for maintenance. So, this will actually be done instead of repainting with the same paint that it is, and it will add a lot of color and vibrancy to the garage. But I was, it was also reported by our engineering staff that the, the mosaics will actually improve the exterior walls of the garage over time, and, and it'll be better for the structure as it is. So, that's a piece on the maintenance. Ms. Croce is here, of course, tonight. This is very important work for her. She, she, I wanna give her an opportunity to talk to you about the project. Ms. Croce has worked on many public art projects, many of them, twenty, twenty large-scale community-driven projects, just as this one, where community members provide input in the development of the project. She's done several of those for the City of Santa Cruz over the past eight years, and she's very, very excited to be able to bring her work to her community. She's a full-time art teacher at Mission Hill School. And she's the artist that actually developed the mosaics in her sidewalks, celebrating the diversity of labor. And I wanna pause, because this is very important, and she was recently honored and received, I have to read this, the, celebrating the diversity of labor, has been awarded with the two thousand and nineteen Best Community Project in the eighth annual Mosaic Arts International Jury Exhibition. This is a very prestigious award that our community project that Kathleen completed on our sidewalks here on Main Street received. So, we're just very happy and for her and thankful that that work is in our community. So, with that, I would like to invite Kathleen to talk to the council about, more details about the project.
Thank you. Good evening. It's really nice to be here. So, I know it's kind of difficult to vote on a project where all you see is just big blank colors and no images. And the reason for that is that it's super important, in the work that I do, I call myself a community artist, that the community itself has input in the images that they're gonna live with, that they have ownership and pride in them. So, I can't give you a drawing without talking to the community first and getting their input. But I do have an overall idea and plan that I'd like to share with you. The celebrating the diversity of labor mosaics that are downstairs, well, outside, they, they feel incomplete to me, because they only go through immigration through nineteen forty-five. And we've had plenty more waves of immigration since then, and, and our community is more diverse than it was in nineteen forty-five. In addition to that, one of the mosaics that's down there, the one that is representing Italy, is actually representing a wave of immigration from Northern Europe that has nine different cultures. So, Swedes, Swiss, Basques, Germans, French, Greeks, the Italians, and Spain, they, they all came, and I couldn't put all of those on one tile. So, that's a group that didn't get recognized. In addition, those pieces, they're historical, they represent our history, and they're also sort of isolating. We, as individuals, I don't think any, I, I don't know, I don't think I've ever met anyone who identifies with one culture. Almost all of us are, are mixed. And, and I think that this piece can be a great way to show the connections between individuals. So, my idea is that for each of the one hundred and eighty-five panels, the horizontal panels that are there, we would solicit from a family, what is your cultural identity? And they would tell us what it is. You know, maybe it's two regions in Mexico and one region in El Salvador, and German and Portuguese. And then we would have another family who'd give us- And then we would have another family who'd give us something else. And if those two families shared, for instance, El Salvador, we would put their two family panels beside each other, and the, the patterns that represent that culture would bridge both panels. So I have this little, like, drawing on top of the garage there, and you can see, like, those circles. So if we just imagine that those circles represent different, like, that one circle, if you stand up from a, from a distance, we'll make that, say, the Chinese. And so every family panel in that grouping would have a connection to each other. Could you give me the next slide, please? It might be hard to tell because I colored it light pink, the one back. That light pink one up there, that would be one family group. That's an eight-foot wide section. And one corner of their piece has that, has a part of a circle that connects to four other panels. So that's like one family's history connects to four other families' histories. Thank you for the little hand right there. Okay. Yeah, we could do the next slide. And then the next slide, maybe, or do we have one more? We're done? Okay. The other thing that's really exciting about this project to me is that it doesn't have to be my drawings. I have this overall vision, but our community is full of really talented artists. And there's no reason, well, there's lots of reasons for me to invite them in. I'd like this to be a community project. And so who knows? Maybe Jaime Sanchez will do the El Salvador design for me. And so every family that has El Salvador would get Jaime's pattern for El Salvador. Or there's just so many artists that, and there's so many opportunities, we could potentially say, why don't you develop the whole panel for this family, just include these three patterns, and then in this other space, whatever you want? So I'm looking forward to not only working with community at large to figure out what they would like to see up there, but to get other local artists involved in the process. One of the ways we're, I, I love Farmer's Market. So if the project is approved, we'll have a regular presence at Farmer's Market, gathering input from people. And I know that because we're going to have to do community fundraising as well, we'll go to other, like Knights of Columbus, or Rotary, and other places, and get input from them on their family histories. And we'll try to do, we'll try to be mindful and equitable, and make sure that we capture who we are now, that we have that nice historical piece, but really represent the families that live here now. You, are you, it's back to you?
I'm back to me.
Thank you, Temra.
Thank you, Kathleen. I just want to share with the council how this project links to your strategic plan. And there are several areas that this project touches on. One, economic development, definitely by creating that place-making place here in the downtown area, like in, at Museo. Just also how attractive and unique this project will be in our downtown once it's completed. Definitely it touches on community engagement and community well-being by providing positive activities for youth to engage in, in our community through this large installation of art project. And public safety, providing youth with, with a positive opportunity to, again, be engaged in a, in a free art center. So this evening, the recommendation that we have in front of you is, is that by motioning you direct staff to proceed with the Watsonville Brillante project at the Rodriguez parking garage, and that will include developing a lease agreement for the Museo Park. If you decide to approve that this project move forward, then we're asking council this evening to appropriate $60,000 to the general fund in order to prepare the surface of the parking garage. And I want to pause a moment and just bring to your attention that in our current capital improvement plan, we have $110,000 already in our plan to maintain the concrete of the parking structure. So this will be instead of that. Because the work needs to be done anyways, because paint is chipping away, and the metal underneath might start rusting. So the maintenance is, is required, it's not something we can avoid. So this will be instead. We're also asking the council to approve the in-kind contributions that have been requested for this project, in support of this project, and that's basically access to the garage, water, and electricity at the garage when the installation is taking place, and that's only twice a year, for five years. And waiving the $10,500 estimated building permit fees for the project. So that is the recommendation this evening, and we're happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Councilwoman Garcia?
This is such an exciting project, but I do have some questions. In regards to the in-kind contributions, what would be the estimated cost of usage of the water and electricity for those five years?
I, I actually don't have an exact amount, but I probably would say it's negligible in, in the, in the sense it's, it's as much as required. Maybe you can help me answer that, how much water and electricity you're going to need.
Actually, if you don't mind, I'll have Suzanne from Rinaldi Tile.
Perfect.
Come on up and talk about during installation, how much water and electricity we'll use.
Water is expensive in our community. So for a bucket of thinset to mix up for about 50 square feet, you have about six quarts of water. Negligent, you know, Rinaldi will have a washout barrel on site, so we recycle all of our washout. The solids that are in the installation materials sink to the bottom of the barrel, we dispose adequately at, you know, our home site, which is right across the Pahró River. For electricity, all we need is, we need to plug in our drill and to mix up some thinset. So yes, very negligent, you know, because Lynn and my electricity bill are surviving those things for, for a long time, because we do a lot of the installation at her studio as well. So almost none to talk about.
Well, we just, a few years ago, increased our water rates. And so I would ask you to ask Steve to estimate, based on what she presented, what that would be. And so the two, second part of that same question is, in terms of total cost of in-kind, which includes what we would have charged more than $1 for the Museo Park, and when we find out about the electricity, and then the fee waivers, et cetera, and the $60,000, what would that total be? So if you could get back to us.
I, I estimated in the financial impact of the, of the report, a range, because we don't know, depending of what section of the surface we are preparing, there are some that are, a simple power wash will do, and others will require a more elaborate and perhaps expensive sandblasting, or a different process that will be more costly. So what I did is, I estimated a range for the, the financial contribution of the city to be between $36,000, which is the minimum if we only power wash, to $70,000 maximum as, as our financial contribution to this project.
But, but in terms of in-kind, okay, I'm talking about.
Oh, you want to, the, the in-kind.
Okay. And, and so, but you can get back to us on that. My second question is, the proposed project states that the students would possibly earn graduation credits, and I wanted to know, has that already been approved by the superintendent?
It's, Kathleen will speak about that.
No. We, we have met with Pahró Valley Unified School District. I have the correct credential to do so. They're in favor of the project, but we're, we're months away from that, so they haven't scheduled it. It's not in their plan at this time, although it's in their plan to move forward.
Okay. So it's in the process?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And my final question is, it is stated that staff is revising the city's public art programming guidelines. I have never seen those guidelines. So could you tell us what specifically is being revised?
Yeah, so we are actually looking into adopting a public arts process for the city. We currently have guidelines for public mules, and we have a fee, and, but the process needs to be revamped, and we believe that this will be a great opportunity. We are currently working on, on that, to come to council within the next month or so. So this process will be adopted by council, and we're looking at perhaps one of our commissions being involved in, in approving art projects and bringing the recommendations to council when public art projects are being considered by the city. So the process currently does not exist in, in one single place, so that's what we're hoping to do, just to have one process that is clear. And, and we find that by, by doing so, we're also going to help the artist community by providing more clarity as to what our process is in order to having more art in our community, which I think we all support.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez?
Thank you. This is probably a city question first. It requires a permit, but there, what would they need the permit for? Because what, I mean, how is this constructed versus, I mean, I can understand a permit that's two-by-fours and sheet rock and electrical, but what is this permit for?
Well, it's basically, you know, like any other construction or remodel in public property, right? So this will require something to be adhered to the exteriors of our walls in the garage, I think you're calling mariester, which is probably going to be more eloquent than I will be.
I mean, California building code, you go to a section and say, this is what you have to do for it.
And there, there is such a section for mosaics installation, and they will look at the materials that are being used in order to install the mosaics on the wall, and that's what the permit basically will consist of. Say more.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. That's exactly right. Any alterations you do to your home, for example, if you were to put up stucco, or if you were to put up brick at your home, you'd need to come in and permit for that alteration to your home. Same with this building. It, it's a different surfacing for it, so we have to make sure it meets building code standards.
Okay. Now, the $60,000, since this has been done incrementally over the course of five years, is that, that would be for the entire five years? Or, I mean, because I would think that they'd only need to do a section at a time in terms of pressure washing or sandblasting. So this is for the entire duration?
That is correct. That is our understanding, and the quote that, that we received, it's actually been done like one year at a time for five years.
And, and the Museo contract for the, the dollar years, is there a term of five years?
For the term of five years, correct.
Okay. And I do like the fact that you're going beyond just the Farmer's Market, because there's a lot of other community that are here that may not necessarily be there, and so I really want to make sure that we expand that out. The other thing is, with this particular diagram, because I've read your, you've given me some package, I know I've read the materials, and I know I'm going to get you out there on the roadshow on, on this project. I don't see that you had the large panels. We just had the, the smaller ones. Can you explain to us, either there's a difference, or was that later?
No, there's not a difference. It was a matter of oversight in the, in the image that was presented. We will be doing the big uprights as well, and the plan there is to have a, a single image on each of those four vertical sections. We'd like it to be black and white, and I know it will have to come before the Arts Commission when that happens, but we would like to use images from Juan Fuentes, who's a graduate of Watsonville High School. He's a, he's in every California American, Mexican-American museum in the, in the state as a, he's represented, he's well-known. And he's, he's very honored to give us the images. And we would get from him like 20 different images, and put them out in the public and let the public choose which of those images they would like to see. He has Asians and Mexicans and Black people, so there, we'll get a, a wide diversity of faces to choose from.
And I think the other question that I had left, and I think that this is a staff question, was, I know the, the community part of it, the, the permits, I'm, I'll, I'll move on, because I could catch you up later on to another question I've left.
And Mayor and Council, if I might respond to Councilmember Garcia's question about in-kind. So our, our estimate on that would be for the, for the in-kind water and electrical not to exceed $1,000 over the course of the project. So it is a, it's a negligible amount.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yeah. It's a, it's a awesome project, but I do have some concerns, and I have some questions. I found a councilman asked some of those same questions. But I do want to make sure that, that, that $60,000, approximate $60,000, is for the five years. But my concern is this, is we still have to paint our garage on both sides, inside and outside. Are we going to do this in conjunction? Is it going to take that long, five years, to paint our garage?
No, I don't think it will take five years. I would think we will coordinate the work. One of the great things about working in this project with Kathleen and having her team do an assessment of the surface along with our maintenance staff, is that initially Kathleen was thinking of starting on Second Street. That was like what she thought, like, oh, that's what I want to start. But then when we look at the surface, the conditions of the surface, we actually know that the most, the side that needs to be addressed sooner in terms of maintenance is actually the one that faces the post office. So Kathleen has offered to, to start there, so, so we can start addressing the, the area that needs the most maintenance now on the exterior. And of course, we're not using all the money that we had earmarked in our capital improvement plan. We had, like I said, we had $110,000. We're asking for $60,000 of that same money to be appropriated for these over the course of five years. But the remaining of the money will be then used for the regular maintenance that is necessary at this time. So we will do both. We will face the exterior and do the maintenance of the interior as we were ear, like, it was earmarked for next, to start next year, next fiscal year.
Sorry to interrupt you. You're saying $110,000?
And the capital improvement.
Earmarked in capital gains. So that roughly leaves us with $50,000?
Correct.
To, to do the whole garage, repaint the whole garage?
I don't know that the whole garage was earmarked to be repainted, but what I know, that money was set aside to fix a little bit of the epoxy that is on the floor. If you, when you drive out of the garage, you, you can see that there are some areas that need to be maintained, so it was for that. And then the, the exterior walls. So there's not much more that, at this time, was earmarked for the garage itself.
And, and I do have a concern with the waiving the permit fees, because I'd hate to set a precedent. I mean, I'm in, that just concerns me. Because I know we want to have other, other artists that are going to want to put other murals up, and, and if they say, well, you already waived the, the permit fees for, for this project, why don't you waive the permit fees for my project? And, and I don't want to set a bad precedence. And I think at least, you know, if they pay something of the permit fees, so it's, so it's, it's been said that it, you know, something was paid towards this, so we don't set that precedent.
Something to keep in mind is that not all our projects will require a permit. This one, because it involves construction, it requires a permit. And the artist is doing the heavy lifting of the fundraising of a project that could, the, the value of the project is, could near the $2 million.
Yeah, but I'm just trying to get to the point of, it might be a simple mural.
Yeah.
But that person, that artist is going to come saying, well, that artist was able to be waived, you know, and mine's only $1,000 or $2,000. And are we going to set that precedence of saying, don't we, when we do murals, when we do any artistic work in our city, we're going to waive permits? That, that's one of my concerns.
So Councilmember Gonzalez, I appreciate that question. I think what sets this project apart is that... I think what sets this project apart is that we're talking about improvements to a city-owned facility, which would be different from a general art project that gets proposed on private property, as we often see, or other parts of town. And in this case, we're talking about structural improvements that will benefit from on our city property. And Maria Esther, our city engineer, can talk more about this, but the mosaic surfacing on the building will actually provide a better quality, more resilient exterior to our garage than what we have now, in addition to the value of having the art piece. And that's why we were having some consideration around, in this case, waiving of the building fees and acknowledgement of the additional value that we will retain on the building once it's complete. I understand the concern about setting precedents, and I think because of the uniqueness of this project, it's a little bit different from our typical art proposal or art permit.
I understand the importance of, but there's also the other part of, are we going to be held liable if that adhesion doesn't work? Because we do the work of the prep work?
That is why we are asking that the installers obtain a permit, so that it can be reviewed, and like as Maria indicated, be in compliance with building code. So, and part of the agreement that we will do, once the art, it's approved and the installation, part of the agreement with the artist will be, the installers will have their proper insurance to do the installation, they will sign a waiver of subrogation when they're installing, and after the project is installed, we will own it like our property. But in the time that it's being installed, it will be the responsibility of the installers, and they've already agreed to be responsible for that, so.
And the last question is, I think it's really important that we have a commitment from our local artists, that we try to get as many local artists involved in this project so it can really reflect our community.
Councilwoman Hearst?
Let's take it out to the public, please.
Yes.
Any comments from the public? Are welcome now.
After being elected to the Santa Cruz City School Board in 2010, I was greatly honored to go to Mission Hill Middle School for their open house the following spring, and one of the first people I met was Kathleen Croce. When I walked into her classroom, I knew that I had walked into the classroom of a truly fabulous teacher. And over the years that I've observed her in the community, I've come to appreciate how much she has to give to this community. The philosopher Pericles said, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." This woman has vision. And again, you don't need to be sighted in both eyes, which I'm not, in order to have vision. She has vision for so many. She is such an asset to this community, not just this community, but the county. And as you saw, the 2019 award that she got for mosaic tile, again, she puts, she's put in the upper realms of the great artists throughout the United States. This project will provide this parking garage, and again, Frank Lloyd Wright said, "Form follows function." Well, function doesn't have to be just in a parking garage to hold automobiles. It can also be to advertise who we are and the greatness and the diversity of this community through mosaic tile, folks. So, I am asking that you approve this project, and as I've told Kathleen Croce, I will be one of the first ones to get these old gnarled hands to work on mosaic tile. Hopefully, I can still see to handle them over the next five years. Put them in place. I would be glad to write her a three-digit check because of the fact that I know that this will put Watsonville on the map as one of the truly brillante comunidades of California and the United States. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, city staff, members of the public, good evening. Councilmember Hearst, condolences on the passing of your mother.
Thank you.
My name is Heidi Alonso, longtime Watsonville resident, 201 West Phillips, artist, high school art teacher, and community enthusiast. Some of you may recognize me from my earlier active years volunteering to support projects for the betterment of Watsonville youth's educational, recreational, housing, and economic opportunities. In the 1990s and 2000s, I served as a board of trustee member for the Watsonville City Library, and worked closely with the city while this very building, including the garage slash proposed art space in which we are meeting, was just a concept on paper. I also served as a Santa Cruz County Arts Commissioner and understand the importance for art in Watsonville public spaces. I've been happy to see others carry on the torch and create our current downtown murals. So what brings me out of my semi-retirement? Watsonville Brillante. Watsonville has come a long way, but our youth still have many unmet needs. Involvement in the arts give our students meaningful activities, helps them build pride in and for Watsonville. This project is an amazing gem that has been unearthed in our neighborhood. We are lucky that Watsonville, and not some other community, is the focus of Kathleen Croce's current vision. We are doubly fortunate that Kathleen Croce is spearheading this project. She knows how to get the job done. She is a teaching, mosaic-making, public art rock star, whose Santa Cruz County mosaic murals made with community and student collaboration are legendary. If we don't do everything within our power to retain her and keep this project in our community, some other city will not make that same mistake. Please do the right thing and proceed with the Watsonville Brillante project, and make this a reality for all of us. What an opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. I'm Judy Stabile from Parro Valley Arts, and I am a current Arts Commissioner for the County of Santa Cruz, 4th District, representing Watsonville. But tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of Parro Valley Arts, myself, and I think our community. This is an extraordinary opportunity that's probably not going to come along in a very long time again. There are very few artists that would come up to the plate with over $1 million worth of funding, close to $2 million worth of funding, and not feature their own artwork. She's stepping up to the plate to feature Watsonville artists and to create an intergenerational opportunity. It's not just for the students, but it's for the whole community to come together to create something fabulous that will shine a national, and maybe even an international, positive light upon our community. I don't have a lot of words to say, but Kathleen has been a tremendous influence on the community. She can get the job done, as has been said. She's a motivator, she's a mentor, she's already stepped up to the plate to work with Watsonville artists, to become a mentor and to become a coworker with them. I can't say enough about Kathleen. I've worked with her in different capacities over the years, and I just think this is a fabulous project and opportunity for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. I'm Judy Gittleson, and I'm a recent local artist in Watsonville, and I tip my hat to Kathleen. I just met her, but I am so impressed with her capability as a fundraiser, as managing the logistics, as bringing the community together, fostering talent and youth, and leading the way. But the biggest thing that I want to underscore is the value of the fine art and the quality of art that this project would bring to the city, and I totally recommend the funding of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public like to provide input? CNN, I will throw it back to my colleagues. Councilman Hernandez.
I'd like to move the motion to consider the approval of the Watsonville Brillante Art Project.
I'll second the motion. I know that probably, we have some discussion here as well, but this is a very remarkable project, and very impressed with all of the work that's been done here, and how you were able to really bring the community in on the project that's downtown with the recognition you've got for this community as well. I know that it's also going to help with the youth on what you're going to put together to bring them in, and the tools and resources and the skills that they're going to develop that they can then move on with, the ROP kind of skills that come out of it as well, the creativity that we really need, and, you know, it's been a pleasure to be participating with the local arts here as well, and I know that this will be a wonderful project for this community.
Councilwoman Hearst?
I just want to comment that Artist Judy is the artist of the beautiful strawberry, heart-shaped mural that sits upon our building across the street. And aren't we lucky to have so many artists in the audience this evening? And Ms. Heidi, her piece of art sits in your office, Mayor, so take a look at that as you're studying up and looking out the window. You know, after my mother's funeral, the cousins all got together and wanted to argue about genealogy and go over the ancient Hearst genealogy map, and sure enough, you know, there was discussions whether Hearst was an English name, or Hearst was an Irish name, or where the heck they came from. And so, back in 1781, my ancient ancestor, John Hearst, was born in Baltimore. And, you know, you can argue all you want about the mixing pot of Watsonville and the beautiful collection of cultures that exist here, and it is a very special spot. So this is a brilliant project, and I'm sorry that we're running so late here with all our questions, but we must congratulate the artist, and I know the city staff has vetted this very thoroughly, or they wouldn't be bringing it to us, and so, let's move forward.
Councilwoman Parker?
I just want to say how excited I am by this. I'm a teacher, so art is one of those things that, just like music, leads the world with all the other subjects, we just don't get enough of it. So to have more and to have it represent our city, and I know from my family, you know, we're Native American, Amamutsan, Basque, and Spanish, and we're intertwined right here, you know, in the Parro Valley. It's exciting to hear all that, because everyone else that I know is so different, and we are such a mixture of what's going on. I think the price on this is a steal. So, thank you so much for wanting to do this for Watsonville.
Councilwoman Garcia?
Yes, I've been honored to have several very deep conversations with Kathleen, and I reiterate everything that is said here, but as a city council member, one of the things that really caught my attention was, I think this is the first project ever, at least, this is my fifth year, where a project hits three different strategic plan items, the economic development, the civic engagement, and what was the third one? Public safety. No other project has done that, so I congratulate you on that.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate you. I think it's a great project. I know we've sat down, we've had a conversation on this. I think this is going to be really good for the community. I can't wait to see it go up and start going, and I think this is going to give a lot of opportunity to a lot of our youth and a lot of our local artists also, and a lot of our seniors, hopefully, because we have to remember, we do have a multi-generational, even though we have a big gap, big group of young folks here, we still have our seniors that live in the senior center, senior area. But anyways, I do look forward to this project, and the one thing I do ask is to see if maybe and is possible, that we get an apprentice from our high school, at least to learn how to do tile setting, and so by the end of this five years, you know, that he at least has a trade and he can fall back onto, or have an ability to move forward in life. All right? Thank you.
Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez?
I just want to also ask that we do a time lapse of this project. I think that would really be good, as, you know, we go through the years of what we've done and what's been accomplished here. I think it would be really cool to be able to have that and share that, and allow people that missed seeing it come up, and they just show up and it's there, to really have a big magnitude of what that would really look like over the course of the years that you're doing the project.
Great. Any other comments, questions? I'm truly excited for this project, and I hope it does set a precedent. You know, I want other artists to come to Watsonville and know that Watsonville is for artists, and, you know, anybody who wants to contribute to the city of Watsonville to its beauty is more than welcome to do so. So I applaud you for your courage and your vision, and I just can't wait to see when it's completed. So thank you. So we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Hernandez, seconded by Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez, and the motion is to direct staff to proceed with the Watsonville Brillante Project at the Rodriguez Street parking garage and prepare a lease for the Musio Park Community Center for five years at $1 per year.
Are you doing?
And the resolution approving the Watsonville Brillante Art Project located on city property, approving in-kind contributions requested by the artist, waiving city building permit fees estimated at $10,500, and authorizing a $60,000 budget appropriation from the general fund.
And seven.
So we're doing all of them? All right.
I think by two-seven.
All right, okay. And the motion authorizing and directing the city manager to negotiate and execute all necessary agreements. City Clerk, if we can get a roll, please.
Kaufman-Gomez?
Absolutely.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Definitely, yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Dada?
Yes. Congratulations. Okay. Thank you, Tamara, for the report. Appreciate it. And now, we will move on to item 11B, consideration of contract with LDA Partners Incorporated, a corporation to prepare a long-term facilities master plan for the city's municipal service center in an amount not to exceed $150,000. And with us, we have Parks and Public Works and Utilities Director, Palmizano. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Gabe Gordle, Administrative Services Director for, or Manager, I'm sorry, for Pillar Works and Utilities. And we're here this evening to speak about our municipal services center. We're here to recommend the city council adopt a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a contract with LDA Partners to prepare a facilities master plan for the municipal services center, and to appropriate $150,000 from the solid waste fund to fund this planning effort. So the municipal services center is located at 320 Harvest, Harvest Drive, for those in the audience, has been between West Beach and Riverside Drive. It consists of about 7.3 acres, and it's in the, it's classified as general industrial in our zoning maps. It's, the headquarters for 116 staff, houses our fleet maintenance divisions, our solid waste operations, traffic systems operations, customer service division, water services, pox operations, fuel services, and parts of utility administration. So a lot of things, a lot of activities occur at the center, this facility. The facility is a collection of pre-manufactured buildings, steel buildings, that were erected and built between 1965 and 1985. So as you can see, some of our infrastructure is aging, anything from the asphalt to electrical systems to mechanical systems. We need adequate parking for our vehicles. We're, in the future, we're going to grow, we're going to have more vehicles at the facility. We need adequate space for our staff, locker room facilities, adequate desks for our office staff. Our shop also is, with the increase in fleet, our shop operations also need to grow, so we need adequate space for them, for our mechanics to work safely, and having enough room to work. Also, our waste and recycle center, which is located at the facility, is also experiencing high demand. As we're nearing the closure of our landfill, there's more demand for the services at the facility. There's also increasing regulations that require us to operate in a certain manner, which we need to develop space to work in. So there's lots of reasons why we need to look at this facility in a very thoughtful and manner, strategic manner, so we can grow in the future. So, in thinking of that, we... So, in thinking of that, we developed this following project goals. Our goal is to have an improved modern facility with the adequate space for current and future staffing, a facility that has a centrally-located administration building, a facility that complies with the current building standards, that improves the employee experience and satisfaction, which we hope would lead to improved work environment and increased and better teamwork. And also, which is very important, is that it provides adequate flood protection as the facility is in the flood plain. The scope of work includes an engineering and evaluation of the condition of existing buildings to determine the current and future space needs for the facility, where the scope of work would also provide recommendations for optimal facility location and building layout. The scope of work will also provide us with a compiled list of building improvements or replacements with its relative cost estimates, because it's very important to understand how much of this investment the city's going to need in the future to keep this facility going. And also, this scope of work will include a plan that's phased out through a number of years with prioritization on certain particular projects that have a need. So how did we get to this process? We developed, the staff developed a consultant selection process that included advertisement for qualification of statements from architectural firms. The city received submittals from five architectural firms. Four of these firms were invited to present to a committee of staff members, and LDA Partners was deemed the most qualified by the committee. And LDA Partners is based out of Stockton, California, and they have a lot of experience in performing planning and design services for many municipal corporation facilities across the state. They have, one thing that was really, was good about them or strong about them is they had a lot of experience in working with cities of our size and with our needs and demographics and our budgets, which is really key. They were really, it took time to research us and to evaluate our fiscal conditions to see what, that their project would be feasible for our community. They are also going to use local surveying and engineering firms so that there's some local knowledge of geology, of weather, of building permits and processes here, so it makes the process smooth and it's realistic. They're going to develop an interim planning process, which is going to include input from all the staff members at the facility, so we develop something that meets their needs and their wishes and desires. And at the end, they're going to provide us with an actual assessment, a report, a document that's going to include conceptual plans for this facility. Part of the process is that staff, we will, once we review the options, prepared in their study, we would make a presentation to the city council, so you all can review the options and see what we're looking at. The staff is also going to develop a face financial and implementation plan, so we, like I say, forecast in the future and how we can invest our budget dollars to make sure that this facility continues to thrive and we meet the needs and keep our buildings and our fleet and our operations going. So once again, we're here to recommend that the city adopt a resolution, one, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute a contract with LDA Partners to prepare a facilities master plan for the municipal services center, and two, to appropriate $150,000 from the solid waste fund to fund this planning effort. And that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Councilwoman Garcia.
I'm so excited for you that you're going to be able to, hopefully, we'll pass it and you'll be able to do all this work.
Thank you.
Just two questions. The report states that there will be an interactive process with current staff to get input. Can you describe what that's going to look like?
Part of what, we're still in the, the LDA is still finalizing the actual plan, but what it involves is meeting with, in groups, like we'll have our administrative group and we'll meet with them, because the needs are different based on the divisions there. As you noticed, there's quite a few groups of people. So we're going to meet with each individual group, and there's going to be a set of questions, a questionnaire, a survey, and they're going to answer what they're looking as far as, what they need on their job, what's missing, what would improve their life at work at the facility. And so, we're developing the actual specific questions. Once we sign the contract, we move forward, but that's the sort of, in the gist of what we're going to be discussing with them.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. My second question is, the cost of the proposal is not to exceed $150,000, and it will come from solid waste fund. My question is, to make all necessary improvements, from where were those costs come from?
Once we develop a plan, it would be, it would come from the particular division and the specific needs. Each one of those buildings and sections of the facilities houses a different operation. So if it's, for example, a building that's related to a water services operation and we need some improvement in there, so the water fund would pay that. If it was something from the waste and recycle center, then it would come from solid waste, and so on and so on. So it wouldn't, it would be shared across the different groups.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kaufman-Gomez.
Thank you. I know that the salt water or the rise of the water level, what is our elevation there? I know we're in flood zone, but what is our elevation for it to be a concern? I mean, I would think it would be a concern.
It is a concern, and part of this planning effort, or the effort, or part of the work consultants can do is to give us our exact elevation. We don't have quite the, we don't know the exact elevation. We don't know if we're above it. We believe we are, but this will, the engineering firms will tell us, and they'll also tell us what sort of projects we need to implement to.
So this will give us, in response to this investment, we'll get that information, because again, if we're going to do any structure and we're in a flood zone already, making sure that we're, you know, preparing that far forward, because we know that we're going to see issues with the sea level rises.
And that, and that, we do know it is somewhere, if there were a major flood and it was fully flooded, it would be somewhere between two and four feet of flooding in that area. So we know that any new buildings will want to raise that, the ground level of the elevation by whatever that is, something in that range.
And it is actually one of the first studies that we're going to do as part of this project, because like you said, you're right, we need to make sure we conceptualize any plans according to that and.
Well, and the other thing too is going vertical. I mean, we only have so much property that's here, doesn't mean that we're not going to be short-staffed, you know? You know, two-story instead of single-story. I mean, you're going to have to make up for the density factor that we're doing with all construction, and we don't have much more land that we have to work with that's within our means of the city and how that's going to be integrated in here. I'm also happy to hear that we're actually getting a presentation on where we're spending money, especially since I always hit you for anything on the consent agenda that would be about this ballpark range. Do you have a turn time of when you think that this will be rolled back over to us and making the rounds?
This is going to take a while. So we're probably going to take probably six to eight months for them to provide an initial report, so we're looking at the beginning of next year, end of this year for our presentation.
And that will also determine like a percentage of each of the different departments that would be contributing to this as a future investment?
Yeah, we could, we would, we would probably have to do that analysis ourselves. I mean, the consultant's going to just tell, give us the improvements, give us a cost estimate, and we know which facilities are going to go where, so we can prepare that.
What is a current square footage that we have there for the buildings? I mean.
I don't have it offhand. We do have it, I don't have it on me right now.
And then maybe identify, you know, where we are now versus where, because you need so much per square footage, per employee that's there, 115, plus also the extra load that you're having with them, the extra vehicles and everything else that's going along with that. It'd be a good idea for us to sort of know, here we are, because you probably have a lot of, 114 people are probably packed on this campus.
They are.
And we know that that's going to involve a significant square footage for capital improvement on this type of a big picture. Thank you.
Welcome. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one. Actually, when you gave me the tour of the facilities, it looks, the facility looks great. No, I'm just kidding. One of the discussions we had, though, was the concerns for the runoff of the water. Is this going to help us look at that and try to come up with some solutions on trying to meet the requirements?
Absolutely.
Because I mean, it's something that we had the conversation, saying that, you know, that point is so high to meet, it's hard to get to that.
Absolutely. That was one of the first items that I personally mentioned to the consultants that I was interested in as part of this project, because obviously, I don't want, make improvements that are again, that may provide bigger issues or bigger problems to deal with in the future. And I believe that these improvements will also allow to better maintain this property, to allow us to better control that runoff and improve our, the quality of the rainwater that comes out of our property. So I believe this is a win-win in that. Gives us a good facility, it'll help us with some of the environmental regulations we're trying to mitigate. So it's a great project, and we'll have to see what the outcome's going to be.
Any other comments or questions from council? Seeing then, I will now turn to the public. If the public, anybody in the public would like to provide input on this item, we welcome any comments right now. Okay, seeing then, I'll throw it back to my colleagues, Councilman Hearst.
Thank you very much. You know, this is something that should have been done about 25 years ago or so, but there was some financial issues that prevented that from occurring, so I'm glad that staff has fully vetted this and that we're able to move forward and that old dreams can be new again. So congratulations in advance to the MSC, and we're always open for a new tour. So I'll move, I'll move the item.
I'll just second that.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Hearst, seconded by Councilwoman Parker, to approve a resolution awarding a contract to LDA Partners Incorporated, a corporation to prepare a long-term facilities master plan for the city's municipal service center in an amount not to exceed $150,000, authorizing and directing the city manager to execute contract, and authorizing a $150,000 budget appropriation from the solid waste fund. If Ms., the city clerk can take a vote?
Kaufman-Gomez?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Hearst?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay. Item 12 on the agenda, emergency items added to the agenda. We didn't add anything to the agenda. Okay. Item 13, requests and scheduling of future agenda items.
I know I brought this up once before, but I'd like to see if we can go look back at the closing of Lincoln Street for the Watsonville High School.
Thank you, Councilman Gonzalez. Anything else?
You know, that Lincoln Street issue's been beat to death for decades and decades. I think we're wasting our time going back there again, but I can understand some of the concerns of the neighbors.
Thank you, Councilman Hearst. Anything else from my colleagues? Nope? Okay, item 14, we will adjourn today's meeting. Thank you, everyone, for being here, and we'll see you in two weeks.
I have a note, she's not here.